All right, let's call the order of the July 1st, 2013, regular meeting of the zoning commission for the town of Simsbury. I will appoint, do I need to appoint anybody? I don't need to appoint anybody. All right, no alternates here to appoint. Good, all right. Approval of minutes, June 17th meeting.
I had no issues with them.
You weren't here, Dave. I was fine with them, so we'll move to adopt those as submitted. And we have some public hearings. Would you like to read the call, Ed?
Okay, now, inasmuch as the two issues that we will discuss are continuation, I guess I'll just reread the original call from last meeting.
Just choose the legal notice.
Legal notice, town of Simsbury, zoning commission, regular meeting. Zoning commission of town of Simsbury will hold a public hearing at a regular meeting to be held Monday, June 17th, and now continued July 1st at 7:00 PM in the main meeting room at the Simsbury Town Offices, 933 Hot Meadow Street, Simsbury, Connecticut on the following. Item one, application 13-26 of Ensign Bickford Realty, owner for special exception pursuant to Article 10, Section D of the Simsbury zoning regulations for excavation and removal of materials on the property located at 437 Hot Meadow Street, map F14, block 103, lot 005-3, zone I2. Item two was fulfilled last time. Item three is another continuation, that is, application 13-32 of David M. and Cheryl Cordany, owners, for special exception pursuant to Article 7, Section C9 of the Simsbury zoning regulations for an accessory dwelling unit on the property located at 32 Lucy Way, map 113, block 109, lot 018, zone R80. At this hearing, interested persons may appear and be heard and written communication will be received, dated this third day of June 2013 in Simsbury, Connecticut.
Okay, thank you, Ed. The application 13-22 has been withdrawn, that's...
It's withdrawn.
Okay. All right, so we will take these in the order that they are on our sheet. First would be Ensign Bickford Realty.
Good evening, Gus Jasminski from Ensign Bickford Realty. We have Amy DePaolo, the president of Ensign Bickford Realty, Bob Stevens, a landscape architect. Just a couple of things tonight. Last week, we kind of ended our discussion with a number of trucks.
Right.
And I guess, just to put that in perspective, it's basically, if you haul it every day, it's 10, 11 trucks a day. Even if you haul it every other day, it's 20, 22 trucks a day. Well, the intersection at Potter Forest Drive, there's approximately 20,000 cars a day. So just 20 versus 20,000 cars a day, it's not substantial in the overall scheme of things.
What was your total truck count, Pat?
It was like 5,400 at 17 years.
Gus, could you just sit over here, please?
Yep.
Thanks. You tried to listen to the recording from the last meeting.
We didn't, we didn't do a good job.
It was hard to hear.
We didn't have any professional help here.
Leslie wasn't here, you weren't here, Hiram, how did we get through it? I don't know.
Just in, one of the things, in the staff comments that are Article 10, Section D4, A through K, just an acknowledgement that we've read the regulations, we're comfortable with all the regulations, we've done this before, we have no issue with the regulations, we intend to follow all those. There's one little minor item on J. here of your regulations, and except, it says that we have to restore the area with rye grass. Well, the wetlands commission requested that we use a seed that's more appropriate to attract birds, minor thing, but. And we've seen the staff comments today, and we have no issue with any of them. We're open to all their comments, and we agree with all of them.
So I appreciate that you came back with the truck count. I think the only real concern we had was that if there was, you know, the Hartford decided to come back and build a big building on your property, and they wanted it next week, so, you know, that was...
Right.
The issue was if the two years got compressed down to six months.
If something like that drastically comes back, we'll come back, we'll deal with staff, we'll come back.
Okay.
The intent right now is, it's more likely we'll come back after two years, request another extension. It's really a function of the economy and how quick we can sell some of the material.
I understand. I understand. Is there anyone else here tonight who wishes to speak to this topic at the public hearing? Any questions from the commissioners? Additional questions?
I got a question, Nate. On one of the sheets, it says you're going to operate from 7 to 5, 7, 8 to 5. Does it specify how many trucks during that time period?
No, it doesn't. Monday through Friday, 7 to 5.
But shouldn't it say something that would be a trigger point for you to come back to us and say, we've got to get this all out here in six months, and we've got to do 20 trucks a day or something, instead of what? What's the proposal today?
Let me just say this, just physically, if we did it, it's 20 trucks a day, even if we did it every other day. But at some point, if you have, a loader can load, just say, 10 trucks an hour. So, you know, at some point, you go, okay, would you put in two loaders? It's really not that big to put in, to get two loaders to load 20 trucks an hour, and I'm not sure you get all those trucks off through the light. So at some point, even if we said, man, we've got to do this in, you know, in a very compressed rate of time, there's some physical constraints that, the site's small enough that, you know, a payloader can load 10 trucks.
Yeah, maybe we should ask, I understand what Dave's saying exactly, which is, this presumes a two-year period and no impact, or very low impact on the community, which is what we all expect.
Yeah.
What's the trigger, Hiram, that would require them, or would allow us to bring them back in if we felt like, you know, 50 trucks a day was too many?
My sense is that you will hear from the police department, we will hear from the police department about situations that are unsafe for the desire.
But we have jurisdiction to bring them back in and say, that permit that we gave you, are there terms, I mean, we're issuing a special permit, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. And the special permit doesn't have any mention in it as to the period of time, well, it's the two years, for two years.
And 7 to 5.
7 to 5.
And I don't think it says 20 trucks a day. If it said the permit is for 20 trucks a day, then fine, if they go to 30, they've got to come back here.
What I would, and it's up to you, what I would suggest, that if the police department has occasion to talk to them about issues which are creating a non-safe condition, make that part of the motive if you like, and then we could have the ability to ask them to come back and talk about that.
Is there a number of trucks per day that you think is, would be, you could comfortably work within?
If you were up to it, I think it's 20 trucks a day is not very efficient.
Well, it's not very efficient. 50, 60 trucks a day, I mean, that's, you know...
I don't think we want to do that, because that will spook the public.
Well, if you have 5 trucks an hour, that's 40 trucks a day.
Stevens, a Stevens land architect. In your regulation, what Gus cited, one of the items in there does speak to this, it says, "Truck access to the excavation shall be so arranged as to minimize danger to traffic and nuisance to surrounding properties."
So that would be the violation.
If there is a danger to traffic or some kind of a nuisance, you do have recourse that we're in violation.
And I think what's going to happen here is the department will trigger that.
Yeah.
So there's the teeth, there's the teeth that we would have to bring you back. It's just that protection.
Yeah, maybe we might. I'm sure. But I agree with Dave, I think that it has to be clear the hours, and it's just going to be Monday through Friday, and if you step into Saturdays, now you're risking it.
Those things will be in our resolution, Jerry. Those will be in our...
Their documents say 5 to 7, Monday through Friday.
7 to 5.
7 to 5, I'm sorry.
Apparently given the length.
All right.
All right, so, okay.
Has there been any conversation with the engineers for what the bond required by the...
No, because he reviewed it for technical sufficiency between the town engineer, who's been out for two weeks, determining the amount of the bond, and then the town attorney determining the form of the bond. That would typically take place after the approval, just in case there were any changes to the plans.
We can, I mean, it'd be adequate. Any other questions from the commissioners, or from the audience? So then we need a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, we can indulge on you to sit here for a few more minutes.
Okay.
We're fine. Great entertainment. It's no hockey game.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, for the record, TJ Donnie, who and I represent David Sherry Cordany. In this application, you opened the public hearing without presentation last week, we're very thankful for that, appreciate your consideration. And this is an application for an Article 7, Section C9, accessory apartment use at 32 Lucy Way. We presented you with elevations, site plan, and other information, including a graphic as to what the house, what the garage unit's going to look like. In essence, it's a three-car garage with a 984 square foot accessory apartment unit above. You get this in full flight, because before you amended your regulation on these things, the applicant had applied for and received a building permit from the town of Simsbury to build a three-car garage with a studio above. But now that you've made the change in the regulation, we're trying to catch up, and we would like that, we'd like that accessory living accommodation under your...
I thought I saw this building permit that said it was for storage space.
Same, I mean, it's studio storage space, it's not an apartment. I mean, I don't know what the architect said on it, but it was, the building permit was for full utilities, and it's just going to be a real nice addition to a real nice house in Simsbury, for a real nice family.
I can address that, too. We talked with the builder when you first came in, and made it clear that even though the garage was being applied for, and that space would be created, that they wouldn't be allowed to create the actual accessory apartment until this commission acted on it at a future date. So that's...
And it was, they told us we couldn't have an accessory apartment there, or we had to wait the five years to apply for it. What you did with your amendment, the regulation, was take out the five-year waiting period for a structure to become an apartment. There is a full staff report by Lynch-Arest, dated June 14, 2013. We agree with every one of her findings, and she finds it fully compliant with the regulation.
Any questions? There was an issue with a neighbor, was that resolved, or a question?
There's a question of a possible limited private restriction in the area. We continue to have cordial discussions with the neighbor. I talked to her on Wednesday last week, I was supposed to talk to her today, she didn't call me, but we're going to continue to work with her. It relates to a private restriction, has nothing to do with the land use approval.
Is that true?
It is, it meets all the zoning regulations, agreements between the neighbors. And we fully expect, too, that had there been some questions that the neighbor wanted to answer from us, they would have called us, certainly had plenty of time to do that. So it's our opinion that we don't have any dog in that particular discussion.
All right, any other questions for, is there anyone here who wishes to speak to this topic? Neighbors were all noticed. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So Lou.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so, I guess the first topic would be to discuss the application number 13-26 of Ensign Bickford Realty, and their permit to excavate a lot at 347... 437, Hot Meadow Street. Questions? Hiram and the staff had done a nice job of coming up with memo, as well as the resolutions. Thought they were pretty comprehensive. Questions or comments, Jerry?
No, I think it's all right.
So I guess I'd be looking for a motion to approve.
I move to approve, subject to the issues prescribed by staff.
All right, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approve. Thank you. Only have 100 trucks there the first time.
There are some things there about pre-meeting with staff.
See, it's 6:00.
Thank you.
Just wait for me.
All right, and discussion on application 13-32 for the Cardanys, beautiful new three-car garage with a studio, no, accessory apartment, how about? Looking for a motion?
I move we approve application 13-32.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approved. This could be a new world record.
Because this could be the entertainment portion of our... There's no hockey game.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Just a couple of quick things, if I could. One is, I gave you a copy of the Connecticut Federation of Planning and Zoning Agencies' newsletter, just, you know, kind of an interesting read. It talks about some of the cases that have gone on in the last quarter. So if you get a chance to take a look at that and have any questions, it's kind of interesting. But they do put the newsletter out quarterly, and it's kind of an interesting thing if you are interested in that type of thing. Specifically, they talk about some unique cases in Connecticut land use law. Just recently went to a hot topic session with a bunch of planners and attorneys in Hartford, and talked about Connecticut land use law, some of the things that have happened in the last couple of years, and some of them are just extraordinary, mind-boggling. And there's one in there, it was a reference to an Anatra case, A-N-A-T-R-A, I believe, it's down on the Connecticut Shore, Old Sayrick, maybe. And that's a very interesting read, so take a look at that. Couple of quick things with regard to the Village District project. I put on the agenda that the next meeting for the Village District project is July 17. That's not true. I learned today that a couple of the consultants have conflicts, and for some reason, they feel as though they have to go on vacation, I'm not sure what that's all about. But it'll probably be pushed back a little bit later, and I'll be sure to let everybody know what happens, or when the new dates are for that. We're coming very close to the end of that particular process. Very interesting presentation last time, a lot of graphics, very nice presentation by the architects, some really interesting ideas about that area, really kind of fascinating. I wish that more people would come and participate, but people that come, I guess, are the interested folks. So we're hoping that one more public meeting, and we'll try to make that a meeting where the boards and commissions can all meet and talk about that as well. First session was on visioning, the second session was on design, that's what was held at the last meeting, and the third one will be on the regulation itself. So we'll kind of give you a preview as to what that Village District regulation might look like when it actually gets brought to you, perhaps in the fall, depending upon... We'll have a discussion session about it before we actually decide to set a hearing, but that would be the idea, is to try to do that in the fall. So far, we've gotten lots of positive feedback from people that have come, some interesting ideas, trying to clear up some things that are not conforming, trying to make some other things kind of interesting, regarding the walkability, sustainability, and things like that. So I'll keep you up to date as to what's going on there, but that's moving along nicely. The second thing is the marketing study, phase one, and again, I just got an email today from that consultant, and he's actually working pretty hard, talking to a lot of the business people in town, so dine on a bell people, phone on people, and talking to them about what would make it easier for them to do business, and the types of things that would help them to do business in town. So he's been very actively sort of meeting with people, talking with people as well. And they will probably come back to do one more presentation, again, in July sometime. Depending upon what your schedule is, we'll find a date where people can actually make it. But that's turning up some interesting things. We think that for a phase one study, which is just kind of a baseline study, we hope that people will be happy with it. We think he's actually sort of digging kind of deep, spending a lot of time. I think in both cases, I can tell you that both the consultants have probably more than spent the money that they had allocated originally. So we're really doing pretty well for what we asked for, for both of those studies. So we're hopeful about that one as well. And again, I'll keep you up to date in terms of when the next meeting for that will be. And then lastly, the Hartford land use study, actually tomorrow, we're interviewing consultants that will be actually at the Hartford, doing that, it's scheduled to take place, the first one will start at 12:30, and then probably go to 5:30. So they each get 90 minutes, and then a little bit of a break in between. So that's, the committee will be meeting, as many folks as can make it would come to that. And then hopefully shortly thereafter, we'll select the consultant and then move forward. As you may recall, the schedule to try to finish that whole thing up was end of September. So I think that probably early September, probably right after Labor Day, is when the actual charrette will take place, and then there'll be just really a lot of crunching and to get that thing done before the end of September, but that's where we're at now. Hartford will be sitting in, as will their Realtor, as will the committee as well. So we hope to have a good representation there, and should be some very interesting presentations. I know some of them are already in town today, walking around, looking at things, so hopefully it'll go well. So, exciting time.
While you're up there, in terms of design review board applications and town committees, have you had dialogue, or is...
I haven't heard anything from, we put it on the web, we did send it to the papers, it's actually on the What's New page, I think, on the town website as well. Did send it to the town chairs, both town chairs.
Okay.
Haven't heard a word. I thought, and I really wasn't sure whether it was going to come to you or not, but whatever, if I get anything, I'll certainly let you know.
I probably should check my town email, that I don't do. That'd probably be a good thing. All right.
I don't think our town committee has discussed it, so...
Well, that's right, both, neither town committee has had their caucus or their nominating meetings. Yeah, but those are coming up, right?
I think, and in the letter, say, was it August 15th, or...
August 15th is when we need their recommendations, but the town committees, I'm pretty sure Republicans is 17th.
We're going to argue 17, too.
But I was just curious if there've been any other applicants that you are aware of, or...
No, not heard a word. It's been very quiet, which is sort of eerie.
Yeah.
What about the issue that got pulled today, the signage issue?
Yeah, I can give you a little bit of background, I don't want to go into the application itself in order to not prejudice it, but I can tell you that the applicant previously had applied for a zone change for the town center zone, basically to change that street frontage along Mallway. That referral did go to the design review board and the planning commission both, because they're in the town center, Form Based Code Zone, so they would, both of those committees did not recommend approval of that, they recommended unanimous denial of it in its current configuration. I talked with the attorney after that meeting, and suggested to them there were probably a number of other ways to do that, what he wanted differently. And then I think Thursday, last Thursday, I believe, they said, okay, we agree, we'll do that. So the application that was there was withdrawn. Now, whether they'll come back with something different or not, I can only tell you, I made suggestions to them, whether they go by what I said or recommended to them, I don't know. So we'll just have to wait to see what shows up. If it shows up very soon, it could be scheduled for your next meeting, for the July 17...
But the issue, I have forgotten if he had mentioned it, but the issue was that they wanted permission to do a freestanding sign on that grass...
Correct.
...as opposed to mounting it on the building.
Correct, correct. There are a couple of different ways that it could be done, right under current regulations. One is to attach it to the building, flat on the building.
It could be the identical sign, right?
Could be, yeah. And the projecting sign hanging out from the building could be essentially the same size.
Why did they feel that the freestanding sign was better?
I really would rather wait for the applicant to explain it to you, frankly.
I thought he wanted to put it up on Hot Meadow Street. I thought that was...
No, it's on the property at 10 Mallway, that was the application previously. In terms of rationale, honestly, I'd rather let them explain it.
Yeah, yeah, we shouldn't prejudice.
I have a couple of things, I have three things, Big Y, what's going on there?
Just heard this week that they're down to the very final, short strokes on that. The DOT has asked them for some information, they submitted it last week, permit should be issued any day now, as far as I know.
Do you think they're going to start this year?
I do think they're going to start this year, whether it's going to be August, or whether it's going to be shortly thereafter, but I do think they're going to start this year.
And is it true the pharmacy that was originally talked about going in up to the north end there, is not coming in now?
Dorset Crossing, you mean? You know, that's been a discussion, the shape of that building, as you may know, looked, kind of looked like a pharmacy for a long time. I've never talked with anybody from the pharmacy to say, you know, we'd like to bring a plan in, I've never talked to the owner, so I've never gotten anything from that. I don't know whether that's the case or not. I do know that a number of them I've talked to about the special needs housing, the 48 units that's there, and I've also had some discussions with some other people that are talking about the market rate apartments that are part of Dorset Crossing, part of Dorset Crossing as well. And both the Big Y and the apartment people were both excited about that as well, so...
And then lastly, what's going on with Andy's? I see it looks like they gutted it, and there's some activity in there.
Well, there is no, actually, no permit for the baseball activity that was going in there, they're storing equipment in there supposedly, according to, they continue to talk to the zoning enforcement officer about that, they don't have any permits to operate there. Again, I can check with Howard again tomorrow morning, but every week I've checked with him. I'm not sure that they're going to operate in that area, there's also a lower level that they're talking about operating in.
It didn't look like storage to me. It looked like bedding cages.
It was active storage when I went by.
Yeah.
We've actually talked to them a couple of times, we'll renew that discussion again next day.
I mean, I think it's great that some...
I do, too. I'm just...
Well, I think, you know, to me, the way, the way to do it is to come in and talk to people about what you have in mind, do it right, you know, get a permit. Do things without permits, you have a real insurance question, frankly, you know, you don't have any permits to do it. And I have no idea whether things could get broken inside or outside, or, you know, how people would view that activity. But again, try to encourage people to get the permits, we think they're fair, we think the process is quick, so to try to do it right way. So again, I'll speak with Howard again tomorrow morning, so...
You mentioned a couple of things that gone to DRB, is there anything else that they're looking at that we haven't heard of, or know about?
Nothing that I'm aware of. I know that previously, as you know, we talked about the shops across the street, some changes there. That hasn't gone any further right now, that was approved, what the commission approved. We talked to them about trying to put some, maybe some box bay windows in the front to provide some sort of texture to the front of that building, rather than just have a sort of flat surface there. Tried to meet, actually, Emo was going to meet with them last Tuesday and talk with them, I'm not sure that's going to change much from what this commission approved. The other thing was the Cannon Building, and they have not come back yet with a revised plan for that. That originally had that handicap walkway that went straight from the sidewalk into the building, and our view, and our suggestion from the outset was that that handicap walkway could be behind the building, tucked in very neatly behind the building, and not necessarily go right through the middle of the front lawn. So that's where that is. I've talked to the architect a couple of times, and I said that I think if it were the architect's plan, and he had full authority over that plan, he would probably do it a bit differently, and he said he thought he would, too. So I said, we'll try to work with the owner and see if you could suggest to him that it would be better to do it a different way, so. So I think that's what they're working on. Nothing else that I'm aware of at this time.
You know, the windows across the street, just real quick, I had to laugh, I went over there the day after to take a look when I was stopping at Starbucks, and had the architect only brought in a picture of the windows they already installed, they were the exact same windows we were sitting here today.
Exactly.
That are already in the building.
Same observation.
Did you notice that? And like, we spent a half an hour...
An hour talking about this?
Muttons and the dividers and the windows, and they're already in the building.
They were there, yeah.
So had he just brought those pictures in and said, we're just conforming with what we did last year, I think we really could have minimized our conversation on that.
What does the meeting for the 15th look like today?
Present time, not much. So, now, I will tell you this, I should take that back a little bit, there's an application for, that has to do with a moratorium and our regulations, that has to do with horse riding operations, that is, keeping of horses and horse riding operations in town. And then there's a proposal by the same applicant to come and propose a different regulation. He feels that our current regulations are insufficient to control horse riding activities in residential areas. So without sort of getting in and sort of telling you the whole staff report at this time, I can tell you that, you know, we've tried to work with people over the years and suggested a number of things to them, and sometimes they're successful, sometimes they're not. So it is, actually, two separate public hearings, one for the moratorium, which the commission may decide to enact or may not. I will have to be very careful with the dates, because once we open the hearing, we need to close it within 35 days unless they give us an extension, so I'll be very careful about that, and let you know, you know, what the timeframes are there.
Yeah, I just, I know that we don't have meetings in August, so if we can't start and finish something on the 15th, we're not going to get it done under that regulation. We did have a special meeting last year in August, I think, didn't we? We had one extra meeting.
We did, yeah.
End of July, it was right before the 1st of August.
I was with vacations.
For the very same reason.
Must be our vacations and everything, so we'd have a full board.
Well, that's what, my next thing was, again, to be sure that we have a quorum.
Yeah, certainly we'll do that, and we'll also make sure to, I mean, you certainly can decide that night whether you've heard enough, whether you've heard it all, whether you want to continue it or whatever, we can go from there. We'll have extension letters made up so that they can decide what they want to do at that point.